I'd like to welcome you to the January 26, 2017, meeting of the North Andover School Committee. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'd invite everyone to stand up and recognize the flag, please.
(inaudible)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Just as a reminder, we're being recorded, so I'd ask the audience in up here as well to silence your mobile devices. The first order of business tonight is public comment. I know we have a lot of people in the audience tonight. I assume a lot of people are here to comment on the FY18 budget. We're going to have that separately in the agenda, and we'll take public comment for that agenda at that time. But if there are other things that the public want to come forward on besides FY18 budget, this is the time to do so. When you come up, please identify yourself and your address, please.
Carl Vissering, 30 Anne Road. The agenda was not posted when it was supposed to. This is what the website looked like. It was fine. It was working. It just had not been posted. And under state law, you're not supposed to continue unless there's an emergency situation. I don't believe that applies here.
So I've been informed by the Assistant to the Superintendent that she transmitted the agenda to the town clerk on January 23 of this week, and she confirmed that today with the town clerk that she posted it at Town Hall. In front of me tonight, I have the Open Meeting Law Guide, and it clearly states, Mr. Vissering, "Meeting notices must be filed with the municipal clerk sufficiently in advance of a public meeting to permit posting of at least 48 hours in advance of the public meeting. Notices may be posted on a bulletin board, in a loose leaf binder, or on electronic display, as long as it is visible to the public at all hours, in or on the municipal building in which the clerk office is located." I understand we had some difficulty with the website this week, but there is no requirement that it must be posted on the website.
And so your customary procedure has been that it's been posted on the website?
And normally, normally it would be, but there was obviously something that happened that was beyond this body's control, so we're going to continue to have the meeting tonight.
Well, here's, here's proof that it was not posted on the website.
I take your word for it. That's fine.
Okay. And so for that reason, I certainly was unable to view it or see it, and so I would guess were most other people.
Well, again, the website's something we can't control. We were here again next week if you want to prepare for the-
The website was not the problem. I have the website here. The notice was posted. It's on the calendar. The calendar has the link to the agenda. The agenda was not there. The agenda was not available.
Duly noted, Mr. Vissering. I feel like we're in compliance with the open meeting law, and we're going to continue this meeting tonight. Thank you for your comment.
I think it's unfortunate because this body has done this in the past, and they have made it difficult to attend meetings at certain times, and there just is no emergency situation that really needs it to go forward at this time. I mean, you weren't here at the time, but doors were locked. You couldn't get in. All kinds of things like that have happened. But similar, similar meeting notices not being posted are not true. And I don't know how we can verify that the agenda was posted the way you say it was.
The only suggestion I'll make, Mr. Vissering, if you want to go down to Town Hall tomorrow and talk to the town clerk about it, that's fine.
All right.
Thank you for your participation. Any other comment tonight besides on the budget? Seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up. Sorry. Just state your name and your address, please.
Jennifer Lee, 217 Bear Hill Road. I'm hoping this isn't a budget issue, and you're going to give me a look, but feel free.
Thank you for your dispensation.
I just, we're relatively new to the area. We've been here a couple of years, and I was in a postpartum haze with all the emails going out about the change with the kindergarten, so I don't know if this is the right time. And I'm not sure if there's going to be a forum to kind of have parents come in and kind of voice their concerns, or at least have a voice. And my apologies for missing the December. I saw the email and, and didn't go any further than that. But I guess, I know there's been some noise about concerns about traffic and busing and timing and things like that. That isn't my concern as much. I just put my young, or my oldest daughter through Franklin Kindergarten and was able to witness what an immense transition it is for the kids to go from preschool a couple of days a week to kindergarten. And so my concern really lies with impact on the students. For me, I have a vested interest not only in the community, because we moved here for the schools. It was one of the main reasons we moved here, but also because I have two little ones, one which you saw, which will be a couple of years on the road, and then I have a two-year-old. So I have two kids who will be impacted by the decision, and, you know, it just, it didn't seem to me, I know that it seemed like budget was really the driving factor, which unfortunately it is for a lot of things, but it didn't seem like there was really an opportunity to talk about, you know, on the other hand, what the impact was going to be to the students. And I just feel like, as a parent, it's a tremendous amount of adjustment and transition we're asking for these five-year-olds. As I mentioned, I just saw my daughter go through it in, in the fall, and I think what mitigated her kind of having a really difficult time was the community and, and Mr. Clark and being able to be at Franklin for a lot of the back-to-school things and her reading buddy. And it just seems like a lot of those things aren't going to be able to happen for, you know, the 2018 kids. So I don't know if there is an opportunity there, if it's kind of a done deal, or if, you know, you're still kind of taking community input or where it is.
Well, I'd say generally speaking, no. We did have a couple of hearings on this back in December, and it's unfortunate if you were unable to attend. You know, I think we had, we heard a similar concern from, from other parents, and not to diminish your personal concern about it.
Right.
I know myself, you know, I have a kindergarten right now at the, at Kittredge School, and I understand, you know, what you're saying. You know, as far as it being a done deal, you know, we did vote on it unanimously. The Board of Selectmen did vote on it already unanimously. But as you're probably well aware, Town Meeting is the final decision-making authority on whether we go forward with this, this plan or not.
Okay.
That's May 9.
Okay.
So there's plenty of time between now and then. But I would encourage you, maybe we could, you know, talk offline, because I don't, we had the public hearing on that issue specifically already.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm available to meet. I know the superintendent, and she may want to comment on this as well, but I want to hear more concerns, because I've heard some concerns about traffic as well as, I think you're getting at transitions, so.
Yeah.
Traffic and transitions.
Yeah. T and T.
We have a kindergarten coordinator by the name of Judy Rogers, who's fantastic. She and I actually met yesterday. We're doing an FAQ about some of the questions you asked, just to give some answers.
Okay.
And we're also putting a school-wide ECC teachers, kindergarten teachers, specialists together to talk about exactly these issues with the school side. And I, and I do think that sometime before Town Meeting, we'll do something that would be targeted towards families for whom this would impact, where people could come in and ask questions of her. So, you know, from this, the, the decision from the school committee, now it's really ours to make happen.
Okay.
If that goes forward in Town Meeting, is that we'll definitely reach out and have some opportunities to talk about the educational component of it.
Okay.
I really do see that there are two issues in this. One is kind of the traffic issues and all of that, which is one group, but in terms of transition and what opportunities are the kids going to have, that will really be us. So I, I, I think I've heard from enough folks now that I think it's really important that we have an opportunity. So we'll absolutely do that between now and May.
Yeah, I think on the blog too, on the Facebook page, there was a number of people who wanted to come tonight and who had expressed some concern, and I think sometimes parents are just so busy, they miss it. Like, they saw the email, but it kind of went over, went over our heads, but-
And Judy did post to that to say, if anyone has any specific questions, please call me.
Okay.
So we're trying to reach out even on the, on the blog or website, whatever that is.
Yeah.
So, but we will absolutely-
That Facebook chat gram.
Right, exactly. Hey, listen. So, but yes, there's no doubt that we need to have the educational side of it too.
Okay.
So we will do so.
Okay.
We did talk about that in December, but I think there's more to go.
Okay.
And if you would want to drop myself or sometime an email, just so you're included in any further discussion, so you don't get lost in shuffle, that'd be great.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on non-budget 18? Okay, great. Student report. We know Cole's not here.
Courtney doesn't look like she's here either.
I don't think Courtney's here either. Bring back Matt.
I know. Where's Matt? He's around.
Come on, Matt. He's around. He's down at Heavenly's at the Y. Okay, so we'll skip the student report. Next on the agenda is consent items. The first order of business is approval of regular session minutes.
So move.
Motion by Mr. McDevit.
Second.
Second by Vice Chairman Limpert. Any discussion? Motion to accept the minutes as, for January 12th, as presented in your packet. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The vote is unanimous, four to nothing. Before, I apologize, I meant to make a comment earlier that Mr. Gross sends his apologies for not being here today. I think he's out of town on business, but obviously he's, I think he said he was going to watch the public comment to get some feedback for it. I think, are we on demand too? I saw, I saw on Facebook that's a select one on demand. Is that true? Are we on demand? We are on demand. I'm getting the nod from over there.
Yeah.
That's great. So stay on demand. All right. Okay. Next, sorry about that. I'm digressing. Next order of business, acceptance of donation from the NAA.
This is a donation of a basketball shot machine valued at approximately $6,000 from our North Andover Athletic Association, allowing kids to, both boys and girls, to work on their jump shots.
Fantastic.
I could use some help.
With the jump shot?
Yes.
Okay.
I could dribble. I just couldn't shoot.
So, as presented in your packet, do I hear a motion?
I move that we accept the North Andover Athletic Association's donation of a basketball jump shot machine valued at approximately $6,000.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McDevit, second by Mr. Limpert. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Another few names vote.
And thank you again to the Athletic Association.
Yes. Could we send them a letter of thank you?
We will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We're going to skip the Chair's report for now, and the Superintendent's report.
Do you want me to skip it too?
No, 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 no. I know we have some things.
Yes, Mr. Gilligan was going to start and I have a few things.
Sure. At this time, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize, recently, we lost one of our great educators here in the town of North Andover at the age of 87, Arthur Hamel. Many of you probably don't know, because he started teaching in North Andover Chemistry in 1957 to 1973, and then he was the Vice Principal at North Andover High School from 1973 to 1990. So he was quite a force, a man of great integrity, had degrees from St. Anselm's, UNH, and Boston State. And I just wanted to put it out to the public that our thoughts are with his family at this time. Quite a guy. I didn't know him all that well personally, just at some of the retirement parties, but the impact that he had on thousands of kids in this community was pretty amazing. So just thinking of Arthur Hamel and his family tonight, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Three other quick things. One is, Mr. Millie and I presented this change to the CIP, to the FINCOM. There are two members in the audience. I think it was favorably received, the change in terms of the increase for, from the elementary classrooms to the proposed kindergarten building. So I think the Town Manager had done an excellent job explaining the finances behind that prior to my, to us presenting it. There were some great questions about the construction, about traffic, which is coming up, and, you know, we have really committed to hiring a, a traffic study, and, but it was a wonderful discussion of kind of where we're headed, and I thought it was anything to add to that, Mr. Millie. It felt, it was a good discussion, and it was well-received.
Yeah, they had some really good questions, but it was a good discussion.
Yeah, great. High school quiz show this weekend was taped at WGBH. Over 120 teams tried out. Only 16 actually made the taping, and we had four students representing us, and they did a great job, and I just want to shout out to those. It's a really fun experience at WGBH. And I, and I'm having a little fun with Mr. Limpert. I hope that's okay.
I enjoy it, Mr. Limpert.
Okay, all right. So, all right. Anyone can answer, but, all right, you ready? How many devices do you think were signed on to our network today during the school day? How many devices were using our Wi-Fi or our network?
This is like an under-over thing?
I just, just come on. Just give me a-
2,000.
3,290. How many individual sessions do you think that translated into? Like, every time someone signs on or off?
6,000.
24,602.
Wow.
Our students and faculty accessed 252 unique apps while, today, in school. And of those devices, there were 900 Chromebooks that were signed into today in the schools. And within the last three days, 1,230 Chromebooks were signed in to our, in our schools.
These are different-
Different Chromebooks.
Different devices.
So I just, sometimes silly things, but I think it demonstrates a really significant upgrade in both our wireless technology and also our handheld devices' use and our Chromebooks, so.
Well, given the fact that slightly before your arrival, many of our computers were steam-powered.
Yes.
We're making dramatic strides here, I have to say, so.
I thought that was fun.
That's very-
Thank you for letting me have fun with Mr. Limpert.
Absolutely. I'm very impressed, too.
Okay. I am done with my superintendent's review.
All right, fantastic. Okay. Coming to the meat of the meeting, the public hearing FY18. To set the table a little bit, two, two weeks ago, two weeks ago, the budget was presented by the Superintendent to the, the committee. She made a very detailed presentation. I'm sorry, that was three weeks ago. I apologize. Three weeks ago, on January 5th, she released the budget. Prior to that, she had released it to the faculty and the administrative staff. The following week, on the 12th, the Board had questions for them. We had a long, long meeting two weeks ago about it, and this is when we hear from the public. This is the public hearing on the FY18 budget. It's been out and about for three weeks now, so I think most people in the audience are probably here for that tonight, and we're going to listen to your comments on that. The next step will be for us to vote on it next week, and at that point, it'll be in the hands of the FINCOM?
The FINCOM.
The FINCOM. And I'm not sure when they're going to hear that. I pause it on the date on that one. Anthony, you want to set the table before we take public comment?
No, Mr. Millie has kind of just an overview. We'll put it up, just in case this is anyone's first view of the public, of our budget. Obviously, there's much more detail in the executive summary, but we thought we would at least just put kind of the basics. If you remember, we're requesting a total 4% increase between proposed increases. Of that $100,000 is just to keep the kindergarten grant going, so really about $350,000 in increases. We're using some solar savings to offset a little bit of our proposed increases. We're coming in, the Town Manager asked us for a 4% increase. And the proposed changes, I believe you have in here, are these. So I know, I, many of you have heard us talk about these before, but here they are. Just thought it'd be helpful.
No, it would be.
That's great. Thank you.
So, for, just for the public, generally speaking, we have, you know, some pretty, in our, in our procedures and policies, we have set guidelines about, you know, how much you can speak. It's supposed to be just make a comment. As you can tell from the first two people who spoke, we do try to do a little give and take, so if there are questions about, you have, we're going to try to answer them. It's not just you speaking to us, but that's fine as well if you just want to make a comment and not have a discussion. But just try to be respectful of other people's times, take a few minutes, and we'll do some follow-up questions right while you're here at the, at the microphone. So whoever wants to start, please come forward, state your name, your address, and we'd love to hear from you. First contestant.
On the presses right.
The Superintendent's going to have questions for you as well. That's just kidding.
Were, were you ready? I'm sorry.
I'm ready.
Okay. Helen Picard, 447 Waverly Road. I just have a few things about the budget I would, I would be excited to support. One is the department coordinators at the high school with evaluation responsibilities. As a high school teacher, I benefited a great deal from that observation process and, and feedback, and I know I became a better teacher for that. So I think that's a really great thing, that those department chairs will have familiarity with the subject and be able to get in there and really work with teachers to help them. Also excited that that includes an arts coordinator. I'm excited about the line item for curriculum, because I think that's going to ensure consistent resources across our district at a time when curriculum consumables are really key for practice and mastery for students. I appreciated the chart with the information about the reading intervention specialists and that, that effect, and I really appreciated the chart that reflected the strategic plan pie chart, so we could see how our plan lines up with our budget. I really appreciate that. And I'm glad to see the math coach, because math is obviously something that everybody struggles with in the U.S. at this point, and so it's, it's good that we'll be able to address that. So I'm really excited about some of those, those implementations through the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Picard. Thank you.
Hi, Holly Lynch, 385 Raleigh Tavern Lane. Thanks you again for another creative and ever-resourced budget. I would repeat the previous comment about the math coach. I'm excited about that. And if I could just have one wish, I would like to see increased funding for the fine arts and the robotics. I, I think it's, it's my understanding that the interest in that has grown substantially in the past few years, and it's outpaced the funding that's been allocated to it, which has been, remains relatively level. So if we could get increased funding for that or more resources, that would be awesome. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there a big event on Saturday, robotics? There is.
All day Saturday?
Yes, all day Saturday.
60 teams.
Did I, did I steal your thunder from later on? I'm sorry. I thought it was just appropriate. We just wanted to segue right there.
That's, that's fine.
Okay. Anyone else like to come forward and comment on the FY18 budget?
Oh, come on in.
Not a, okay. All right. Last call? Sure? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. All right. Here we go. All right. Close button.
Once, twice, go.
All right. So moving on to old business, continuing discussion of the Superintendent's FY18 recommended budget. There are other things you want to add to this?
Yeah, there's a few things we wanted to talk about. Start with Mr. Millie.
At the previous meeting, Mr. Gross had asked about the all-in number, which is, we're approving the, or looking to approve next week, the general fund budget, the operating budget. But there are other, obviously, sources of funding for our school department, and we've done this for a few years now. And so what you see up here for FY15, 16, and 17, what the all-in number looks like. In 17, a couple of those numbers are projections, the revolving accounts. We find out at the end of the year what was spent out of those accounts, and the same with indirect costs. That's an estimate that's given to us by the Town. So, but it should be fairly close to this, and you can see it's been a, been about a 4% increase over the last few years overall, but it includes circuit breaker, which is a reimbursement for previous-year expenses for special education services. It's our grants, and you can see where we lost some funding there, including the kindergarten grant. It's our revolving accounts, which include food services and community programs and all the other revolving accounts. It's shared services, which are facilities and IT. It's indirect costs, the big ones there being healthcare and retirement, and it's the general fund. So you can see in all, for this year, we're looking at $66.5 million in funding for the school department.
And, Mr. Millie, this would look like the number we'd see in the net school spending report that we send to the state.
Yes.
Or close to it.
Yeah, they, they do exclude some things. I mean, this is trying to capture everything, and, you know, at some day down the line, maybe I'll have other expenses, because there are also parent donations and all those things that occur as well.
Absolutely.
But this is our all-in number.
So to the extent that we get or don't get whatever our projection is from circuit breaker, that has to be made up from the operating budget, the general fund.
Correct. Correct. Any reimbursement we get for a circuit breaker helps our, our general fund, but if it's lower than anticipated, then it has to be made up. Correct. And that's part of the reason for the Special Education Stabilization Fund.
Right. Right, right, right.
And it's hard, because obviously we budget now, and circuit breaker isn't decided until much longer.
No, I understand.
Yeah, it gets tough.
Yeah, we have-
It's usually in like June, right?
Well, they fund it in June, but we never really get the numbers till September, October, right?
Correct. And, and so like this year, it's actually $100,000 less than we would have anticipated.
Right.
And we only, we didn't find that out until September.
Now, is that percentage number that we're looking for, or is that just a reimbursement based on what we submit?
Well, basically, right. We know what we submitted.
Okay.
So we know what our qualifying expenses are, but the percentage of reimbursement to a maximum of 75%.
I see. So you base your budget on the submission and the projected reimbursement percentage, I see.
Which has been 72% for years, and it was 70% this year.
I understand.
Yep. Just for the-
And then Mr. Gross had asked to just see kind of the breakdown by, through a pie chart of those funds, and you can see, obviously, the general fund is the largest portion, but indirect costs, not surprisingly either, is the second-largest portion, and then the others you can see there.
Just quickly, in fiscal year 16, obviously, it was about a $400,000 increase there. Is that related to, and I'm trying to remember exactly, but we went above a certain threshold for the special education. Is that, am I confusing?
Yeah, that was the year, and we, we came as close as I've ever seen to qualifying what they call-
For like the 125% or something.
For catastrophic aid. Exactly. Exactly.
But we didn't.
We didn't. But you, that's why the FY16 reimbursement is higher than what we see.
It was in the 15-year, and then it increased it.
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Okay.
Jean, can you go back just one?
To this one?
Yeah, just one. The sort of progressive and fairly noticeable increase in indirect costs is like probably health insurance and-
Yes, yeah. And actually, if I had included FY14, it went down in FY15 by a couple of million dollars.
Because of the- Because of the.
Because of the switch to the GIC.
That's right.
Right.
And FY seventeen is a projection, and in general, the, the town normally gives us a little bit of a higher projection when they come in.
It's usually higher, yep. You can see the change from fifteen to sixteen was only about eight hundred thousand.
Even if the, even if the, it was thirteen or something, thirteen and change, would still be a noticeable increase, right?
Yes.
Yeah, interesting. Yeah, it'd be nice to, if you use that chart, you know, if you recycle that chart, put fourteen on it, that would be a nice number, I mean, that'd be a nice comparison to show that, that GIC impact.
Mm-hmm.
Put that column in there, that'd be great.
Yep.
Interesting.
Okay, last thing we wanted to talk about was, just wanted to remind us that anticipated, we are anticipating a solar savings, so from Osgood Solar, we are participating, anticipating a ninety-four thousand dollar savings on that. We have only budgeted sixty-one thousand dollars of that savings, and that was just conservatively saying, look, we're told we're gonna get the savings, I just wanna make sure it all actually happens before we start budgeting it. You know, Andrew Mailer does say this is gonna happen, but, you know, just being a little cautious. So, what, I tried to think real hard about the conversation we had about reading last, last time, and so I talked to our Lorraine Marks, I talked to Mr. Gilligan, I talked to our reading specialist, and just some of the intricacies of how we do reading intervention support. We intervene with students in the fall in first and second grade. K, it's just too early, they're just getting to see us, we really haven't really assessed them yet in kind of September, October, you know, they're still getting used to the routines of school.
Right.
And then what we do is, when we have availability, we intervene with K in the spring.
Okay.
And, and that's wonderful, yet it draws on our first and second grade numbers that we can support. So, my thought is, trying to be creative and not have to take anything from anywhere, is that we are anticipating about thirty-two thousand dollars of additional savings from solar. By next November or December, we will know, we'll be halfway through our fiscal year, whether or not we're actually realizing the savings that we have been projected, and we will have a really good understanding of what we've been told is actually coming to fruition. So, my proposal, that I will change the budget a little bit, is to actually, in this time next year, hire a full-time reading interventionist using those funds that we have saved if that comes to fruition. And then that way, you know, there are a number of reasons for that. One is because of the K in one, so we hire somebody when we're in, when we're going to K, so we're not pulling from one and two to do K. And two, finding reading interventionist is very difficult, and so trying to find a half-time person for a year, you got a much better shot of finding a full-time person. So, I would rather go full-time, and then hopefully, if it all works out for the following year, we would only have to add a half-time, because we will basically have a half-time position to go to, to go to full. So, my thought here was, kind of next November, we check in on the solar savings. Ms. Marks has already been thinking about this, you know, how we could get someone, we had an MGH intern this year, who if we could have hired her in January, we would have hired her immediately in January, she was quite impressive in the fall, and we have won this spring, too. So, so the thought here is, in an effort to not take anything away, to be fiscally conservative and thoughtful, and to address the reading, this is my proposal.
Thank you. I mean, obviously, I mean, I brought it up, I feel really strongly about being able to target those students, and, you know, we always kind of look to what the data is, and, you know, Mr. Gilligan presented, you know, just really impressive numbers of, of the impact that this has on our younger grades, and I think the timing of that from a kindergarten perspective, I think it makes a lot of sense, and then, you know, hopefully, that's something that we can continue on to help these students, you know, really kind of break out and then be, you know, exactly where they need to be and at that third grade level that we talked about before Dr. Straight.
So.
Thank you.
My thoughts.
Sounds good. Can you, would you remind us again, Dr. Price, about the amount of money that you have in this budget from the Medicaid reimbursement?
Yeah, well, we don't know, but what I can tell you is, so, we believe that we're gonna start, traditionally, the number has been about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars over the last number of years, and so if the town meeting approves the development of a Medicaid revolving account, the town, the fixed cost and revenue, the revenue and fixed cost committee has approved zeroing out that number for the town budget, and then having a revolving account of all the Medicaid reimbursements coming into solely for the use of the schools. And we had talked about anything above a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars going, the town manager, the revenue and fixed cost will present it to the FinCom. The idea is to have all of that reimbursement come in, so two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, but as I was developing some numbers for my mid-cycle evaluation, so, two years ago, about ten percent of the eligible families had given us consent, last year, twelve percent had given us consent, and we're now at ninety-one point six percent had given us percent. We also were only billing for twenty-two, I believe, folks, two years ago, thirty-two, we're now to billing for a hundred and nine of our staff. So, there's two aspects of reimbursement, one is how many staff qualify for their services to be reimbursed, and much of that is just getting people online, and then the other is the percentage. The other thing is, and I would ask Dr. Straight to talk about this, is we used to do it through kind of an archaic turn in pieces of paper, and we now have partnered with eSped, which is our special education software, so can you talk a little bit about that?
Correct, and so what we've done is, we've provided an opportunity and some trainings for our staff to link their direct services, which is part of the individual education plan grid, that's where we find out who and what is going to be reimbursable through this Medicaid system, so that our staff now can directly input it right there in the software, so it cuts a whole middle piece out, so it's uploaded automatically, which should also help to increase our numbers and our reimbursement form, collectively, together.
And the nurses have worked very hard to actually have it linked to HealthMaster, which is their service that they use to deliver support, so that any time the nurses are doing something that is reimbursable. So, we've, we've tried to technologically tighten up, we've gotten more folks being able to be reimbursed, and we have a much larger percentage of reimbursements, so I, I think we could, I'll be honest, we got over-unders going on between myself and the assistant superintendent on what the number's gonna be.
What, what, what did you put, a number in the budget?
I put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget. I would be, I personally think it'll be double that.
Yeah. For the, the eSped input, is it a reimbursement literally for the time they put in, providing that service, or is it for them as a teacher, or how does that work?
Well, it's based on, there's a number of different figures that it's based on, it's based on what kind of services the student has, if the service is a one-on-one or small group. It also depends on who's delivering the service, and what is the professional status or level of that individual. That's a higher, you know, fee, if you will, that we would be able to reimburse, and also the amount of time, thirty minutes, sixty minutes, whatever it is, so there's, you know, some pretty significant calculations that go into the system that determines what we're going to receive.
But, I'm assuming eSped would help do some of this automatically, i.e., type the numbers in, and you have.
Yes, and also my assistant, Laura Hardeman, does a lot of it as well, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But, the fact that we have it hooked up to the software system and that the nurses are included in that now, because that was a piece that's often missed in school districts, is the fact that the nurses can also contribute to this reimbursement piece, we should be looking pretty good. Again, I would just say that one caveat is that it's a delayed reimbursement as well, so.
Right, like circuit break.
So, it's gonna take a while.
Right.
And we also have New England Medical Billing, which Mr. Mealy reached out to a number of years ago, who really got us started on this. If it wasn't for Jim, we wouldn't even be down this, this path, because New England Medical Billing is the one who said, this is what you need to do.
So, we have to give him a certificate, too?
I'd love to take the credit back. They had just been brought aboard just before I started here, so I can't take the credit.
Okay.
She should've, she should've.
So, so, yeah, we're hopeful, but I think Dr. Straight to you, that, you know, this is gonna take some time for us to see. However, we, our plan is to buy the math resource for the K six with it in this, this July, so we're, we hope, we're confident we'll be able to buy that, what we're gonna be able to do beyond that, we, we can't guarantee.
But, but nonetheless, I mean, this sounds like the heroic effort, I mean, getting literally students in the system, but the staff in the system and all of that, I mean, you all have done an outstanding job to really help do.
Everybody's pitched in, everybody's done a great job.
Are the students for this service in eSped, too? Is that where?
Yes.
Okay, so that data goes in there, too?
Yes.
Okay, interesting.
Cool, okay. Okay. All right, any new business from the, from the board? Seeing none, okay. Because it was so good last time, we'll do public comment again. I don't understand, I mean, usually, we have no one here, and we're here till nine o'clock, but we have a lot of people here, and we're gonna get out here a quarter of, unless something happens here.
If you're, if you're fast, Mr. Tracy, nothing will.
I know, I know. So, public comment more time, anyone from the audience like to address the committee on any issue whatsoever, agenda or otherwise?
Go for it.
Okay. So, now to the committee, anything from the committee, an announcement?
Well, just let me reiterate what you started, you stole my thunder. This weekend at, at the high school, in the gymnasium, there's gonna be a robotics tournament, a qualifier for teams to see who might go to the, the state tournament here, and then on to the national, international tournament. We have sixty teams competing from all over New England, and it's gonna be a really exciting time, so I would encourage any or all of you who are interested in seeing what we do, seeing what project-based learning is all about, it'd be a really exciting time to go and check this out. It's, it's a great tournament, it's wonderful to watch students in action, so I encourage you all to go.
Out of curiosity, the attention level of like a sixth-year-old, would they be amused by that?
Absolutely, no, it's, it's.
I always think it was gonna do us a favor with the kids, you know.
I think, I think the six-year-olds.
Yeah?
Oh, absolutely, no, it's, it's really, you'd be surprised, you'd be surprised. The other, the other thing that I would say is that we've had some very strong participation from our own middle school, who have teams now that have been participating, who've been doing very, very well, so that's been a new kind of a turn of, turn of events for us. We have a very strong farm team now, building, you know, farm clubs, of course, yeah, yeah, so it's been great.
Okay, great, Mr. Mealy, anything?
I don't know if you've noticed the signs on the street about the, the high school has their play Grease next week, I think Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I don't know the exact dates, but something to support, if you're looking for a little culture.
Culture, culture, that's next weekend, all right, great, thank you, Mr. Mealy. Andrew, anything?
So, I really just would like to take a moment and really thank the Thompson PTO for putting together the third, I'm sorry, second and third and fourth and fifth grade Jubilee and Sweetheart dances this past weekend, tremendous amount of work goes into those, I know firsthand. Just great event, great success, for those who weren't there, who may be watching, it's just awesome to see the dads out there dancing away and not doing this for two hours. You know, they're really kind of engaged, and, and we, we wanna centerpiece or something, so that made my daughter's night, but great, great night. And I know that the kindergarten and first grade, hosted by Kittredge, I think is March fourth or fifth, whatever that Saturday night is. And I would just like to say quickly, there was a lot of chatter this week, I didn't get a chance to, to ask you about it, but there was some concerns on whether or not Power School went down, or if there were issues with it. I know when I accessed it, after kind of hearing a couple people, it literally almost like crashed, and then it relaunched, and I was able to see some things in there, but if there is any type of upgrade that goes on with that, or there's any kind of system things, would that be something that we might tweet or put out there just so that people are aware?
I, I, one idea is, I know that the high school teachers are all submitting comments to students that are due by, they have to be published by tomorrow afternoon, so there might have been a huge surge of usage, I don't know, but I know that, that all high school students are supposed to be getting comments, mid-trimester comments by, I think, the end of the day tomorrow, so maybe that's part of it.
First I've heard of it. It doesn't mean it doesn't, didn't happen, but it, it didn't rise to any of us, any of us, no. I mean, the only upgrade they did this week was Munis, which wouldn't impact.
No, okay.
Yeah, that, right?
Yeah, we haven't heard.
I just didn't know if anything happened and we heard about it, and maybe it was that.
Maybe I have no idea.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, that was it, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I'll start the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Mr. Limpert, so, Mr. Mealy, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight, I appreciate it.